Councillors, officers and members of the public. I'm David Stephens, I'm the councillor for Thames Ward. I'm also this year's mayor and I will be chairing proceedings this evening. Firstly, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the council, which is actually the first ever to be held online. With social distancing rules still in place, councillor meeting tonight on this video conferencing platform instead of meeting in person at the civic offices. So I'll now move to item, the first item of the evening, item one, which is my mayor's announcements. Before I go on to explain more about the procedure we'll be following this evening, I have some announcements to make. Firstly, the former mayor and a previous leader of the Conservative group Fred Pugh has died. Fred was a longstanding councillor, serving the constituents of Thames Ward and Natalie Maple Durham Ward. He was elected mayor of the borough in 2009/10 municipal year and retired from the council shortly afterwards in May 2012. I hope you'll join me in sending our condolences to his wife Jean and their family. Secondly, I also regret to inform you that a founding member of the Reading Club Mel Association, Dick O'Brien, has also passed away. Dick served as the chairman of the Reading Club Mel Town Twinning Association, was a great advocate of the links between our two special towns. He was very pleased to have been present at the last year's 25th anniversary celebration and reaffirmation of our twinning arrangements and he will be sadly missed. Lastly, additionally, I think, I feel it's only right that this is the first time we've met as a full council since the terrible events of the 20th of June, when three people lost their lives and others were seriously injured in the census attack in Forbury Gardens. I'm sure we'd all like to express our collective shock and sadness about the dreadful distress caused to those affected by the atrocity committed in our town. So can I now ask everybody taking part in the meeting and those watching at home to join me in a minute's silence? Thank you, everybody. As this is the first meeting of the full council since the coronavirus act 2020 has allowed local authority committees to be conducted online, attended remotely by members and officers, I'll now go through the procedure to be followed this evening. Although the meeting is being held online, the public and the press can still see and hear the meeting. The agenda papers have been published on the council's website and the modern.gov app. And the papers have been considered by members. As usual, if you want to speak on an item this evening, if you're not informed in advance, could you please indicate in the chat section that you wish to do so? Officers and I will be monitoring the chat and you'll be called to speak in the order that you indicate your intention. When it comes to voting, and we were hoping to have a slightly simpler method of recording voting rather than going through a full roll call of all all members present each time. Unfortunately, this wasn't technically possible. And so I think what we'll do is take the approach that where there's clear support for an item, I'll ask members to express their approval. And hopefully we'll be happy that that has generally proved the item. If it's clear that it's not, it's close, then we might call for a roll call vote. And I will also ask if anybody wants to completely express their dissent from an item, then there'll be a chance to do that. If people really want to, they can actually ask for a recorded vote. And that will require three councillors to announce that they want the vote fully recorded, at which point we'll then go for the full process of asking every councillor present to indicate their intention whether they wrote for, against or abstain. But say, I think our default and preference would be go for basically indicating support if we can simply do that because it will expedite the evening. I'll shortly ask members to introduce themselves, the benefit of the public and also to ensure their attendance. I've got 39 indicated, so I think we have got all too short. And also to ensure that as expected, they can hear and speak at the meeting, which is important. Can I remind members and officers to put their microphones on mute when you're not speaking? But when you are called to speak, you should unmute the microphone and also make sure we can see you. And then you'll come up and everybody can see your face and hear you. There's also, yes, a couple of cameras shortly before speaking, exactly. So that's to ensure that you're visible. Also, please note, when we come to the speaking items and asking for councillor contributions, unlike the chamber, we don't have the red and green lights. So the monitoring officer's kindly said that he'll intervene and indicate when you've got to four minutes when speaking. That gives you a minute to go. And then he'll sort of press his red light, that's your five minutes and it'll be asked to speak, to stop. So you will hear his voice to actually manage that element of it. And we recognise that obviously we're at the mercy of everybody's individual broadband this evening. So we accept the fact we might lose people, we might rejoin, including possibly myself. But what we do is as long as we've got 12 members present in the meeting, we'll still be core, we can continue with the business. So that all said, I'll now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, please introduce yourselves to the meeting. And councillors, please state your name, any position you hold. So I'll start off, I'm councillor David Stephens, I'm mayor. And obviously, one of my responsibilities is to chair these council meetings. So we go through the first one, councillor David Absalom.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor David Absalom, Redlands Ward.
Excellent, very good, thank you. So councillor Debbs Absalom, Absalom, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor Debbs Absalom, Norcar Ward and the Vice Chair of Traffic Management Subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ayub, seen you.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Mohamed Ayub, Chair of Traffic Management Subcommittee.
Very good. Councillor Isabel Bulston.
Good evening, councillor Isabel Bulston of Maple Durham.
Councillor Dominic Barnett Ward.
Good evening, I'm councillor Adele Barnett Ward, Cavisham Ward councillor and Lead Member for Neighborhoods and Communities.
Councillor Brock.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Jason Brock, Leader of the Council and councillor for Southcote Ward.
Councillor Paul Carmel.
Good evening, councillor Paul Carmel, councillor for Thames Ward.
Councillor Challenger.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor Challenger, Kate Scrove, Deputy Chair of Adults, Social Care, Children's and Education Committee.
Thank you. Councillor, I think Richard Davis.
I am councillor Richard Davis, represent Cavisham Ward. And I'm Chair of the Housing, Neighborhoods and Leisure Committee and I'm Vice Chair of the Audit and Governance Committee.
Very good. Councillor Ricky Devine.
Thank you, Chair, Ricky Devine, title host councillor.
Councillor Rachel Eden.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Rachel Eden, councillor for Whitely Ward and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Edwards.
Oh, good evening, Mr Mayor. My name is councillor Debbs Edwards, councillor at Southcote and Chair of the Licensing Committees.
Very good. So so far we've got a full house. Moving on, councillor Emerson.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor for Minster Ward and Lead Councillor for Corporate and Consumer Services.
Very good. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, my name is John Ennis, councillor of Southcote, Lead Councillor for Housing.
Very good. Councillor Paul Gittings.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Paul Gittings, councillor for Minster Ward and Chair of the Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee.
Very good. Councillor Claire Glasshoff. Councillor Glasshoff.
Mr Mayor, unfortunately.
Didn't quite get, that sounds like she's struggling to get it in. So hopefully we'll be here, but at the moment she's not. Councillor Hacker.
Hello, yeah, councillor Sarah Hacker, councillor for Baccaward and Chair of the Art and Heritage Forum and the Cultural Education Partnership.
Very good. Councillor Graham Hoskin.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, I'm Graham Hoskin, I'm Norcar Ward councillor and the Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport.
Thank you. Councillor Safar James.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Safir James, Kate Scrove councillor.
Councillor Tony Jones. Councillor Tony Jones.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Redlands calling.
Very good. Yeah, we've got you, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Pause there, good. Councillor Khan. Councillor Khan, I think we were warned that he was still stuck in another meeting. So he might, I guess, join us later. Councillor Lang.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Mickey Lang, councillor for Whitely Ward.
Very good. Councillor Joe Lovlock, we've seen her earlier.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, I'm Joe Lovlock, councillor for Norcar Ward and also Vice Chair of the Housing, Neighborhoods and Leisure Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Mangini. I saw you earlier, so I know you're here. Okay, so you were here, so we'll mark yours hopeful. Councillor Mascol. Councillor Mascol. Councillor Mascol.
Oh, councillor McNarny, can you hear me now?
Oh, super, we've got you. Good, very good, okay.
Thank you.
Chris Mascol, we haven't heard from, so hopefully we might catch him. And obviously he might join us later. Councillor McEwen. Rose McEwen.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, I'm Ruth McEwen, councillor for Churchward and also Chair of this committee.
Super, thank you. Sorry, Ruth, not Rose. Councillor McGonagall.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor for Parkward.
Okay, councillor McKenna. Councillor Mick McKenna. Councillor O'Connell. It looks like in the chat, I can see she's struggling. So she's obviously trying to join us but hasn't yet. Right, so hopefully we'll have her later. Councillor Page.
Councillor Tony Page, good evening, Mr Mayor, Deputy Leader of the Council and Lead Member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport.
Super, thank you. Councillor Ashley Pearce.
Evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Ashley Pearce, representing Churchward and the Lead Member for Education.
Thank you. Simon Robinson, councillor Simon Robinson.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, good evening, everyone. I'm councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Councillor Karen Rowland.
Councillor Rowland. Sorry, it's been tricky. Good evening, Mr Mayor, Karen Rowland. I'm representing Abbey Ward and I am the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation. Thank you.
Councillor Jenny Rinn. Councillor Rinn. Okay, just so I can just hear the chat, we've actually got councillor Claire Grasshoff with us, which is great. She says she can't speak, which is our loss, but at least we see she's with us. So Jenny Rinn, no. Okay, councillor Diopal Singh. Again, I think he might still be in the previous meeting, so hopefully he might join us. Councillor Skeets. Councillor Jeanette Skeets.
Yes, Chair, here I am. Sorry, Mr Mayor, apologies. Yes, good evening to you, Mr Mayor, councillor Jeanette Skeets, councillor for Thames Ward and Leader of the Conservative Group.
Super, thank you. Councillor Sukhali.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Ayesha Khela, councillor for Cavisham and Vice Chair of the Planning Applications Committee.
Apologise if I didn't pronounce your surname quite correctly, sir. Councillor Stamford Beale.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor for Peppard Ward, also Deputy Leader of the Opposition and Opposition spokesman for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport.
Very good. Councillor Liz Terry.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Liz Terry, councillor for Minster and Lead Member for Children's Services.
Thank you. Councillor Rob White.
Evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Rob White, Parkward councillor and Leader of the Green Group of Councillors.
So councillor Jamie Witten.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Jamie Witten, Redlands Board Councillor.
Councillor Josh Williams has sent his apologies. Councillor Rose Williams. Councillor Rose Williams. No. Okay, and lastly, but not least, councillor Woodward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, councillor Woodward, councillor for Churchward and Vice Chair of Licensing.
Okay, so super. Thank you very much to all councillors. So we obviously got one or two omissions there. If you can hear us, you're very welcome. And if you can't, you're not here, hopefully we might see or hear you later. But at least we know we've got them, we're all in court as we start.
I believe that councillor passing and councillor Raj Singh are actually here and indicating their attendance.
Shall we take the two, just take them? So councillor, sorry, Singh, councillor Diopal Singh.
So, Mayor, councillor Raj Singh.
Raj Singh, okay, very good, yeah, we've got you, good. And Diopal Singh. No. Okay, well, not to worry, I mean, it was to say, if you want to speak, of course, there's nothing to prevent you later on. So thank you councillors, I'd also like to introduce the officers who are attendants this evening. We won't see them much on screen, but it's absolutely right that we introduce them because they'll be fundamental to running, keeping us on track this evening. And they are Peter Sloman, who is the council's chief executive, Mike Graham, who's the council's monitoring officer, and Michael Popham, who is from Cootie Service Section, and he'll be taking the minutes of the evening. Before we start the formal agenda, I'd just like to seek the council's consent to reaffirm Policy Committee's decision earlier this year, on the 27th of April, to grant a general dispensation to all councillors in relation to the requirements set out in section 85 of the Local Government Act 1972, which states if a member throughout a period of six consecutive months the date of his or her last attendance fails to attend any meeting of the authority, he or she shall, unless the failure is due to some reason approved by the authority before the expiry of that period, cease to be a member of the authority. So I'm seeking your agreement to this in view of the ongoing disruption of the normal committee cycles due to COVID-19 pandemic and would suggest that the dispensation coincides with the end of the current regulations, permitting remote attendance at meetings unless there's a subsequent decision to change that position. So councillors, could I please have your general consent to the proposed general dispensation? I'd suggest a general I would be helpful.
Agreed.
Taken as agreed. Okay, item two is the appointment of myself, the mayor and the deputy mayor. And what we're doing is seeking your formal confirmation, my appointment as mayor and councillor Rachel Eden's appointment as Deputy Mayor for the current municipal year. As you're aware, due to the pandemic, our appointments were made on behalf of the council by Policy Committee on the 27th of May. So this is asking you to ratify that decision, which under normal circumstances would be made by the full council as the first item of business of the new municipal year. So councillors, again, can I have your, please, your formal consent to the appointment of mayor and deputy mayor for the current municipal year? Again. Thank you councillors. Item three, declarations of interest. I've not been notified of any interest to be declared. But I'll now pause for a few moments to allow any councillor to state if they have an interest and wish to declare the nature of their interest. Okay, that's great. So no declarations for a moment. I beg your pardon, I've just scrolled down, Ricky. So, sorry, councillor Devine.
Yes, I need to declare a non-perceivably interest in item 11. I'm actually the Secretary of the Reading Branch of Parkinson's UK, which is one of the organisations mentioned, they use hypotherapy.
Okay, thank you very much for that and obviously the officers will note that. I think that's the only one. Councillor Woodford, what's he saying? Councillor Khan, if you need to. Okay, that's not, that's not relevant. Okay, so thank you for that, declarations of interest. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting. So councillors, can you cast your minds back to the pre-COVID era? I don't know if you can remember that, when we were also actually able to meet the council offices and confirm the minutes are a correct record of the meeting held on the 25th of February 2020. Could I please have a sense of agreement to that?
Yeah. Agreed, agreed. Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Item five, petitions. We have not received any permissions for petitions for this evening's meeting, so we'll move swiftly to questions. So item six is questions from members of the public. And we'll take questions from members of the public first. On this occasion, there's one question from a member of the public, Ms Laura Keane. So Ms Keane, can I welcome you to the meeting? In addition to your question, you may have the right to ask one supplementary question. However, the supplementary question must be used to clarify the answer you've been given to your original question. Afraid it's not an opportunity to ask another question unrelated to reply from the Lead Councillor. So if you could now please press star six on your phone to unmute yourself. When you're ready, please ask your question.
Hello, can you hear?
I can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, brilliant, yeah, sorry, just the first point, it's Louise Keane, not Laura Keane, which I think it sounded like you said, but.
Oh, so I did, that's my script, I'm afraid, so it's Louise.
Oh, okay.
Somebody will pay for that, okay.
No worries.
Okay.
Okay, so it's about the mural, the Black History mural on the Central Club. So my question is, well, I fully support the initiative to nationally list the Black History mural. I understand that the council runs a local listing scheme. Can the council consider locally listing the Black History mural as a stopgap measure until hopefully this important mural is nationally listed?
So Louise, thank you very much for that. And could I ask councillor Karen Rowland to reply, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Ms Keane, for your question. I'm glad to have the opportunity to set the record straight on the mural's status in terms of listing, which is often queried. The mural is a significant part of Reading's local history. It was painted circa 1990 by Alan Howard along with an outstanding community effort. It commemorates the memory of C L R James, the peaceful anti-apartheid demonstrators massacred in Soweto in 1976, Black history through the ages and notable Reading figures from within our own proud Black communities. It is a noted landmark for this town as a statement not only of our deep appreciation of our Black communities, but more broadly of this town's embracing of its widely diverse makeup. The question, however, is as to why the mural isn't locally listed, has a very simple answer. In short, the mural is already protected by a number of planning constraints that carry greater importance than being on the local list. Firstly, as the mural lies in a conservation area, the mural is not actually eligible for the list. In Reading, as set out in our local plan, we do not locally list buildings or monuments within conservation areas. By virtue of it being within the marketplace London Street Conservation Area, the status for the site is actually higher than a local list designation and any demolition of it as such would require a proper planning application. It is worth noting that the Conservation Area appraisal for the marketplace London Street Conservation Area is currently being reviewed and a designation within the conservation area, which many feel that it should have had prior, is being suggested, that of highlighting the mural as a building of townscape merit. In layman's terms, that designation is slightly comparable to a local listing within a conservation area. Such a designation in turn could give it even more weight in planning decisions. It is something that I, as heritage champion for Reading, really hope happens at the first opportunity. And I know that work is progressing on that reappraisal by the Conservation Area Advisory Committee, which will then be submitted to the council. I do not know the timeline for that as it is dependent on a number of factors. To further reassure you that until such time as Historic England may choose to designate it nationally, the building on which the mural is located is included in the Reading Borough Local Plan under policy CR14, Other Sites for Development in Central Reading, where it makes clear that any new development of the Central Club is to retain the iconic mural on the northern facade. Finally, the council has recently publicly reiterated two things that are required of any plans in the redevelopment of the Central Club building that it is on. A, that the community space is retained as part of that site. And B, that the mural be conserved and maintained by the developer in accordance with specialist historic conservation guidelines that will ensure its protection in the future. Along with you, I also share the hope for its national listing, which could be seen as a final crown on its already well-protected future. The mural became eligible for national listing this year when it became 30 years of age, the youngest age at which a building or site is generally considered for national listing. Such a designation will not only afford a final measure of protection, but even more importantly, it would mean that Reading's Black History mural is recognised on a national level for the unique significance and value to this town that we all feel it deserves. I think I join you and others in requesting directly to Historic England that it is an honour for that mural that we in Reading beyond all feel is well due for our very special Black History mural. Thank you for your question.
Very good, thank you, Karen, councillor Rowland. So Ms Keane, do you have a supplementary question you might like to ask?
I don't really have a supplementary question, just kind of as a point. Thank you for that very comprehensive reply, just sounds like it wouldn't be eligible anyway. So it's kind of really, even if, you know, we did try to pursue it, even though we didn't sort of, you know, there wasn't necessarily any benefit as such, but it can't, it wouldn't be eligible anyway. So thank you for sort of clarifying that and I hope I've understood that response as it is. So thank you.
Very good, okay. Well, thank you both for both the question and the comprehensive response, councillor Rowland. So Ms Keane, are you able to hang up now and leave the meeting? You're obviously, of course, you're very welcome to listen and watch for the rest of it, if you wish to do so. Okay, so that's the one question from members of the public that we have. So then we move on to agenda item seven, and that's questions from councillors. And we've received six questions from councillors, so I'll take you through those. And the first one is from councillor White on fly tipping. Councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, this question is on fly tipping so far this year. Fly tipping can blight an area. Over the year, with the recycling centre being closed and other factors at play, Green councillors have received numerous reports of fly tipping. On Amity Road next to the trade waste bins, for example, there are numerous things dumped every week, ranging from unfortunately rotting meat to household waste. Please can we get the fly tipping statistics for the year so far and the ones for the previous three years for comparison?
Just before councillor Barnett Ward's response, just to make a point that actually that's inaccurate to say the recycling centre is closed, it's actually open. It's just that you have to book a slot to actually take your recycling material there. Councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor White for your question. Illegal fly tipping is a nationwide problem. People who choose to flight it rather than dispose of their rubbish responsibly are creating eyesores, risks to public health and, if it's on public land, a drain on the council taxpayers who ultimately foot the bill for cleaning up after them. In Reading, the numbers of fly tipping reports dipped during the lockdown, but we did see more low-level fly tips around our recycling banks and on-street litter bins caused by people choosing not to manage their waste responsibly. Non-compliance with waste regulations by commercial premises can also be a factor which compounds the problem. This council is determined to address this blight, which has an adverse visual and environmental impact on all our residents and on visitors to our town. The figures which you've requested are in a table in your answer. So so far this year, we've had 747 reports. Then for 2017 to 2018, it was 2,509. 2018 to 2019, 1,574. And 2019 to 2020, 1,835. Fly tipping is an environmental crime and this council will not tolerate the selfish and irresponsible behaviour of those who dump rubbish on public land. Our commitment to tackling this problem is demonstrated by the introduction of a new team of recycling and enforcement officers who are dedicated to improving recycling rates and carrying out environmental enforcement activities. Despite the restrictions imposed by the COVID-19 pandemic, these officers have continued to investigate fly tipping and littering offences. The team issued 329 fixed penalty notices, FPNs, between the end of November 2019 and the end of September 2020 and have recently secured four successful prosecutions for littering offences. offences. In fact, since this answer was submitted, they have actually secured another. Officers have been monitoring the area around the Amity Road trade waste bins on a regular basis. No fly tipping signs, which display the maximum penalty for such offences, have been put up as a deterrent. In addition, officers have been speaking to business owners who use those bins, reminding them of their responsibilities to manage their waste effectively and restating that all waste should be contained in the bins. One business has recently changed hands, and the new owner has been contacted to make them aware of their waste duty of care responsibilities. Any waste left at the side of the trade waste containers is inspected, and action is taken if sufficient evidence of origin is found. This work will continue. The team has purchased overt CCTV cameras to expand its ability to monitor problem sites. The first deployment at Kensington Road Brinkbank site has resulted in the issue of 27 FPNs using camera evidence. This has proven the worth of investing in camera enforcement for fly tipping hotspots, so we're now expanding our capacity for these installations. We're about to tackle a hotspot in Abbey Ward, and I welcome suggestions from members of other fly tipping hotspots that could benefit.
Thank you councillor Barnett Ward for your response. Councillor White, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, thank you very much for the response. Yeah, I would just like to ask that the Amity Road site be added to the list for the CCTV camera enforcement, no supplementary. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. So we then move to question two, and that's from councillor Mangini. Councillor Mangini?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we're here.
Okay. It's actually pronounced Mgnani, not Magnini.
I'm doing well on my pronunciation this evening, sorry councillors.
That's okay, that's okay. My question is, when will Tynehurst Children's Parks be refurbished to a standard suitable for children with special needs? We have two schools in the Tynehurst area who cater for special needs children, however, the parks do not have adequate equipment for them.
So councillor Rowland, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Magnini.
Mgnani. Think of money.
It's not just me.
Okay. Reading Borough Council currently manages 58 equipped playgrounds. The existing site is aging, however, and the council has made it a priority of addressing this need across the borough. And in so doing, we recognise that not enough sites provide sufficiently for children with disabilities. In December 2018, a capital bid was submitted for 2.86 million investment in play facilities over the next five years for spending on sites most urgently requiring refreshment and on providing better facilities for people with mobility issues. Approval was given for investment of 270 in 2019-20 and 494K in 2020-21. The council is pleased to say that the capital spending approved for 2020-21 includes full provision of both the junior and toddler play areas at Lawgrave Recreation Ground. The value of the work is estimated to be around 244K, and plans are being made to commission work from playground suppliers. The brief includes challenging and attractive equipment for children of all abilities and needs, and safety surfacing that allows for easy wheelchair and buggy access. The council is also pleased to confirm that 350K has been approved for investment in a fully inclusive play area at Prospect Park. This will also serve children in Tynehurst as well as across the borough. In 2019, a tree fell next to the playground, damaging the equipment. Although the tree was in good health, the ground underneath it was eroded by an underground spring in spate after the wet winter. Full planning permission is required to move the play area to a different location closer to the car park, and public consultation will form part of the process of seeking approval. This work will start in 2021 and be completed in 2122. The positive news is that the council in consulting about new play areas has developed a positive working relationship with a new Accessible Play Task and Finish Group, which was set up following a play focus group of the Access and Disabilities Working Group held in June of 2019. The Task and Finish Group is made up of myself as lead member, council officers, carers of children affected by disabilities, and disabled carers themselves. This group will advise the council at each juncture during the five-year investment period planned for play improvements in Reading, with the goal of ensuring the highest possible quality of play provision for children of all abilities. I am delighted that this group has been brought into formation over the past year. Their advice has already proven to be invaluable. The first significant opportunity to make a difference arose earlier this year when the old multi-unit at Palmer Park needed to be removed for health and safety reasons, leaving a large space at the heart of the play area. A scheme was chosen with the Task and Finish Group, and significant modifications were made to make sure that the experience for disabled children could be even better. These changes were approved by the whole group, and we delivered a far more accessible scheme as a result. The council has been seeking to take account of the play needs of children with disabilities for over a decade. Still, it is a significant number of sites across the estate to modernise, with funding limited as it has been over the past decade. And sadly, our budget is not in the position to provide immediate accessibility for all on every site tomorrow. However, it is with the involvement of our advisory group and local parents and children in the development of new playgrounds at Lawgrave Recreation Ground and Prospect Park that can encourage and guide officers to the best designs, which will improve the experience for children and carers with disabilities. However, creating great play areas is actually hard work and very detail intense. It is very easy to miss things that can make a big difference to people. Still, we look forward to learning as we cooperate more and more on these schemes. I think this iterative consulting process we have started will now continue to make the real difference in providing the next generation of play equipment that we are delivering for Reading. Along with officers, I am very much looking forward to getting those plans on the table and getting to work. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Karen, councillor Rowland. Councillor Mgnani, do you have a supplementary question?
Not as much a supplementary question, but I'd just like to thank Karen Rowland. So I know you've put a lot of effort into trying to get decent parks for those with certain abilities. And I look forward to, hopefully, before I finish my duty as a councillor, to see maybe our area in Tynehurst itself will get something suitable for them. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, very good. And also then you're on again, because you're asking question three, please.
Oh, yeah. Gosh, I'm busy tonight.
Yep.
With the recent unlawful gathering by youths in the parks in and around Tynehurst, where criminal damage to equipment and unsocial behaviour, including drug dealing and users, the parks are left with rubbish and needles, making them unsuitable for little ones to play safely. Would the council consider employing parkkeepers to help the unsociable behaviour and the gathering of drug users? The parks should be closed to public safe from 7pm to 7am during the winter months, with longer openings in the summer months from 7am to 8pm. Tynehurst receives very little funding for recreation for little people, and those who abuse the parks in Green make it more difficult for parents with young ones to have a fun and safe place to play. With the restrictions on social distancing, it is important we have safe, clean, pleasant places for children. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you for your question. Councillor Rowland again to respond, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you again councillor Mgnani.
Got it.
We're going to have a practice session after this. I'll provide my answer now. Parkkeepers used to be employed in most of the large parks in Reading until the late 1980s, when reorganisation in favour of efficiency created the predominantly mobile staffing that we structure that we have today. The only parks in Reading that now have permanent staff are Forbury Gardens and Caversham Court Gardens, where we have head gardeners, who whilst they liaise with other agencies in relation to ASB, are primarily there and responsible for the upkeep of sites, as this is a requirement of the Heritage Lottery funding for the restoration of both of those gardens. However, even when parkkeepers are around, working daytimes as they did, they were not all that effective in standing situations that you're describing. However, I really do share your concern that the pleasure of many people can be disrupted by the bad behaviour of a few. Problems with bored and troublesome youngsters have been occurring across West Reading, not just in Tynehurst. West Berkshire was facing similar problems, I know, over the summer. There are primarily two ways that are best to contend with alienated youths who cause damage in ASB, and that is largely either through enforcement or with engagement. When problems are persistent, enforcement must become necessary. But this is a police rather than a council matter, although there is certainly multi-agency work between the council's ASB team and the police to curb issues. It is therefore so important that criminal behaviour needs to be reported regularly to the police as well as to the council in order to identify hotspots and inform tasking priorities. Reports of persistent ASB should also be fed into the Reading Safer Neighbourhood Forum to enhance the multi-agency work that may be needed, and I know you are a member of that committee. However, where it can, the council tries to engage. If there is a persistent issue with young people causing disturbance in the area, the ASB team will look to liaise with Brighter Futures for Children to see what resources can be accessed and pulled together to work with young people and provide meaningful options to destructive behaviour. Apart from the Forbury Gardens and Caversham Court Gardens, which are secured at night by trained security staff, there are only four other sites that are currently locked at night by local residents. Most of the parks cannot be closed off effectively because they do not have sufficient boundary infrastructure, making them not feasible to provide authorised access overnight. That makes the security and enforcement of larger parks, especially in the evenings, a more challenging issue. More positively, however, the council has announced just over 0.5 million funding for play area improvements in West Reading, and it is hoped that this will provide years of safe, attractive, and fully accessible fund for young people in the area. Again, I would actively encourage all local communities to report any instance of antisocial behaviour that they encounter to the police via 101 or online for investigation and potential action, as well as making the council aware. That information is critical in helping us to develop the best ways to resolve the problems that you describe. Thank you very much for your question.
Okay, thank you councillor Rowland. And councillor Mgnani, do you have a supplementary?
No, but as always, thank you for your support.
And you're absolutely spoiling us this evening, because you've now got a third question you're going to ask.
I just want to make sure you all pronounce my name right.
We've learned our lesson.
Right. Let me see where I'm, what's my next question? Just remember.
You're going to talk about.
Oh, school, street school, yes. Can the council clarify how the school-street project will work? Residents living in roads that are near schools, such as Park Lane, are concerned their movements will be restricted during the start and close of the day. Although I would personally like to see a traffic warden placed in those areas rather than a restriction on local residents, issuing fixed penalty notices would encourage parents who are not willing to walk their children to school. Although I do believe getting children to school safely is essential, and reducing the ozone levels by encouraging children to walk benefits everyone.
Very good. Okay, and let's councillor Page respond to this one.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank councillor Mgnani for her question. The council is currently working with a number of interested schools to support the development of school-street applications. This includes the school undertaking an initial consultation with parents and carers and nearby properties, including those within close proximity of the proposed school-street, and which may be impacted by diverting traffic when the road closure is in operation. All applications from schools will need to be approved by the council's Traffic Management Subcommittee in order to proceed with the proposed school-street road closure. Further information is available on the council's website, and details are in the answer. By way of background summary, an approved school-street closes the road outside the school from traffic for up to 45 minutes, twice a day, during school term time only. Any vehicles already parked in the road can stay or leave throughout the duration of the school-street. Only eligible vehicles can gain access to the road during the school-street closure, and this would include residents, carers, delivery drivers, emergency services, or by special arrangement with the school. Residents who live within the school-street will not have their access restricted. The relevant school or schools will take ownership of the day-to-day operation of the school-street, including providing a marshal at each barrier, opening and closing the school-street, and ensuring eligible vehicles are adhering to safe speeds. Where there are concerns about displacement of traffic onto neighbouring roads, schools must identify potential dedicated park and stride sites for parents, carers that have no alternative other than to drive. These sites will be located within a five-to-10-minute walking distance and aim to limit the level of displacement onto other residential roads. Schools are encouraged to look at other complementary measures, including bikeability, which offers more courses to encourage children to cycle to and from school; walking buses, which can encourage children to walk, socialise, and help get children into a routine; scooter-cycle parking provision, making sure there's enough safe cycle-scooter parking on-site, which will reassure parents and incentivise pupils to travel by bike or scooter; mode shift stars, which is a national sustainable travel initiative, and signing up to this free programme will help the school embed sustainable travel for the longer term; and lastly, WOW, which is a year-round walk-to-school challenge and an excellent way of helping to reduce congestion and pollution outside the school gates while increasing safety and improving the physical and mental wellbeing of pupils. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Just before I ask councillor Mgnani for a supplementary, can I just ask for clarification? Indulge me, if you would. When you say scooter, I trust you mean a sort of a posh scooter, not these e-scooters that almost knocked me over yesterday on the pavement?
E-scooters are still illegal in Reading, Mr Mayor, so I'm not in any way encouraging the use of illegal conveyances.
Excellent. Pleased to hear it. Okay, so councillor Mgnani, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't, and thank you for the information.
Okay, so question five we come to now is councillor Wittem.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Would you like to ask your question? Yeah.
Redlands residents have been contacting me, querying how the recently implemented Redlands Road Active Travel Scheme, which mostly consists of white bicycle symbols painted on the road, costs £30,000. Please, can I have a breakdown of the costs?
And once again councillor Page to answer, please.
I thank councillor Wittem for his question. The £30,000 estimate was reported in an update to Traffic Management Subcommittee in July. This figure was an estimate based on the original bid to the Department for Transport for tranche-one emergency funding to introduce schemes supporting active travel and social distancing as part of the COVID pandemic. At this point, we did not know if we would be successful with our bid and did not have a concept design scheme. Like many other councils, we did not receive the total initial funding allocation, and therefore officers have reassessed the original thinking, adjusting the proposals to fit the funding offered. It's important to understand the context of these active travel schemes and that they were and are a response to COVID and intended to be temporary. The funding reflects that the situation will change, and some of these temporary measures may be removed as we eventually return to normal. At this time, the scheme is incomplete, so we do not have the scheme costs yet. Officers are reconsidering some aspects, such as the use of virtual cushions, and also assessing the benefits of these being physical constructions. The cost of any implemented scheme, including these active travel schemes, are the whole costs, including design, procurement, and delivery by our in-house staff, not just the deliverables on the street. The cost of these measures in Redlands Road to date will be nowhere near £30,000, but officers cannot directly answer the question at this time due to the scheme being incomplete. The revised cost estimate for the measures in Redlands Road is about £10,000, allowing for possible changes to the cushions. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Page. Councillor Wittem, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you.
Okay, I noticed the time. Officers, can you just confirm? Have we got time for one more question?
Yes, I think we have, Mr Mayor. I think we're due to finish questions at 19:33.
Super. Okay. Which case councillor Singh, Roderick Singh, would you like to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is on racial and religiously aggravated crime. Recently, Reading Chronicle reported a gradual increase in racist or religiously aggravated crime in past three years. There are also reports of a surge in hate crimes against gay and transgender people. And let us not forget the heinous act at Oldbury Garden. Last month, an Indian Sikh driver was attacked near Groffnor. Last month, an Indian Sikh driver was attacked near Groffner Casino in Reading in the early hours of Sunday. One of the attacker tried to remove his turban and asked him, are you Taliban? Reading residents are known for their caring and compassionate outlook, and we see that through this pandemic. And building cohesive environment in which our community can flourish must lie at the core of the council's day-to-day business and should reflect across a range of different policy areas, underpinned by a robust and visible leadership. What steps is the council pursuing to shape cohesion, rebuild trust and promote Reading values?
Okay, thank you councillor Singh. Councillor Brock, would you like to reply, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Singh is quite right to highlight some of the deplorable recent incidents, and I'm sure that we would all join in condemning the actions of those who seek to divide our community. Now, this year has been a particularly challenging one, and throughout the pandemic, the vast majority of Reading's residents and organisations have shown the most positive spirit of helping one another and have proactively demonstrated all that is wonderful about our town, but we have also seen the unequal and inequitable impact that Covid-19 has had on fame groups, people with particular long-term health conditions, older people, younger people, people who are unwaged or in lower-paid jobs, those with mental health conditions, and those who suffer digital exclusion, just to list some. The council is committed to working with local communities and with partner agencies to improve the quality of life in our neighbourhoods so that they meet the diverse needs of residents in being safe, well-run and attractive places in which people want to live and work. We want our neighbourhoods to be inclusive places where local people are empowered to feel ownership of and contribute to the life of their area, and we want residents to shape the places where they live. Now, we work closely with the voluntary and the community sector to enable communities to shape the services they want and need. We commissioned the Alliance for Cohesion and Racial Equality, AKA, to provide a service to support groups of people affected by complex multiple factors that put them at risk of suffering discrimination, prejudice and isolation. The main elements of this service are an equalities alliance, bringing together groups that are traditionally opposed to cast aside their differences and exercise mutual respect for each other's disposition and point of view, and a community-led hate crime forum that works in partnership with agencies in tackling hate crime. Thinking about this year and acknowledging the unequal impact of Covid-19 as I've described, as well as the enormous benefit that community groups have had in helping to address this, in July, we allocated £100,000 small grants to the voluntary sector to assist in their response to these impacts. Going forward, we are working with the voluntary sector and with community groups to shape a social inclusion action plan to build thriving communities by addressing inequalities with a particular focus on reducing poverty, improving opportunities and tackling the barriers our diverse communities face. In addition, we continue to work closely with the police on a strategic level, including through the Community Safety Partnership, to tackle crime in our town and keep our residents safe. Building a cohesive town is necessarily a task of partnership and collaboration. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brock. So we've got a couple of moments left, so councillor Singh, do you have a supplementary you want to ask?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a supplementary question.
Very short.
Yeah, my question is, does the leader of the council have a measurement, a robust measurement strategy in place which gives him clear understanding of local community cohesion challenges and measures challenges in community cohesion levels as advised under the Race Relation Act of 2000?
Mr Mayor, if I may respond?
Please do.
So we have measures that one can find in our existing corporate plan, but this is in need of updating, of course, and we'll bring forward a new corporate plan next year. But as part of the Social Inclusion Action Plan, of course, we will have to identify good metrics, both quantitative and I think perhaps qualitative as well, so that we can assess our success and we should choose targets that are challenging, and we shouldn't be afraid of the fact that this might mean that we don't always reach them because it will always encourage us to strive harder. And so I look forward to the discussions around that action plan as we move forward.
Thank you councillor Brock. And that's perfectly timed, as we've just run out of time for councillors' questions. So that's good, we got through all six questions and then that went well. So thank you councillors for your questions, thank you lady councillors for all your responses. So we next move to item eight, and this is online meeting protocols, and if you haven't found it, it's page 21 of your agenda pack. And the report sets out further arrangements to be made in accordance with section 78 of the Coronavirus Act 2020 to enable additional council meetings to take place online during the current Covid-19 pandemic. And I'll ask councillor Brock, please, to speak and move the motion based on the recommendations set out in the officer report. Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is, of course, time now for us to bring back all of our committees. I had hoped initially that perhaps we'd be in a position where we could have physical in-person meetings or at least some form of hybrid arrangement by now, but clearly the pandemic is not going anywhere anytime soon, so right and proper then that we would look to roll out our online protocols to all of our committees. Officers have recommended that we use the 10-member size limits that we have used so successfully thus far for policy committee, for planning applications committee and for traffic management subcommittee. Indeed, I think by using this limit and adjusting the proportionality to make it work, we have had, or at least say some of the local journalists tell me, some of the, if not the, smoothest run meetings in Berkshire, at least until this evening anyway, with no compromise in terms of the quality and the calibre of the debate that we have had. And I know, Mr Mayor, you've been on, of course, many of the policy committee meetings and you'll know that the debate is not stilted by having a limited size or indeed by having the meetings online, although one does lose perhaps a little bit of the theatre of the thing. Also, officers recommend that substitution will be allowed so that all groups can always be represented, if substitutions not typically have as part of our day-to-day practices in more ordinary times, but right to bring it in at this point. I think it's worth acknowledging that there is an argument, and there will be an argument, for bringing the committees back up to their full size, but I think that it's right at the moment that the chairs of the core standing committees, councillor Gittings on SEPT, councillor Davies on HNL and councillor McEwan on ACE, should have the chance to get bedded into the new format and as should all members participating. And I would say they are extremely challenging meetings to chair online, as I'm sure you will know as partners here, both tonight and indeed from your experience with order than governance, and it is very hard to keep up with everything that's going on at one time. So I think good to give the chairs an opportunity to have a bit of a run-up before we look to expand to full size, and I give an undertaking that we will make that review after we've had the first round of meetings, the SEPT, ACE and HNL, so looking towards the new calendar year as in January 2021. I've had a discussion at the end of last week with the leader of the opposition when we discussed this point, you know, I'm sure she may feel perhaps that it's time to have the full size already. I think we've seen this evening that there are challenges as you begin to scale up the meetings, challenges with people being able to get in, challenges with people being able to participate, obviously the ratio of committee services to support to each member becomes less favourable. So I entirely support the officer recommendation for the 10-member size limit. I think that's enough from me on this, so I move as printed, Mr Page.
Thank you councillor Brock.
Second reserve.
Okay, you said it for me, I was about to say, you've indicated that you're second reserves, that's fine. So councillor Page will second but not speak at this moment. Councillor Jeanette Skeets, you've indicated you'd like to speak, so please speak now.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'd just like to say that at the beginning of this pandemic, when this came before us, that the Conservative group totally got behind the administration and said that we would give you our support in whatever it took to keep the business going of the council, and that is still our position, I have to say. However, I actually think tonight's meeting is going really well. I've sat on many meetings, licensing, policy, and it's inevitable that people will drop in and out depending on the connection and the outage, but I do think tonight, Mr Mayor, this meeting is going extremely well and we are running at full capacity. Now, I think it's a bit of a test tonight really as to where we take this forward. I do think that in this report, I understand there's some hesitation about the technical outage and capacity. I accept that, and I do accept that maybe, you know, for new, not new councillors, but councillors who will be chairing these meetings for the first time may need a test run on it and get used to it. However, I do think there are a lot of councillors, and maybe from all sides of the council, that have been feeling a little bit redundant because they've not been able to speak in the way they would normally at the policy or indeed full council and other committees. So with that, I would say that I think that perhaps, and tonight, as I say, has gone well, we could go back to the full capacity of the, with the reintroduction of the other committees. I do think that perhaps they should not be reduced because it is still only a percentage of the 46 councillors, and I think that would, you know, if it's 16 councillors to a meeting, I think that would, it wouldn't stretch the capability of technology. And here we are tonight, as I say, and it's going pretty well, and other councils, surrounding authorities are running their meetings to full capacity. And so I really would like to see that we also reintroduce our meetings, not at the reduced level, to go back. It's more democratic, our councillors feel they would have more of a voice, and so that's my position on that for our group, Mr Mayor, on the Conservative side. Now, I do thank councillor Brock for his time on Friday. We spoke at length about this and he understood where I was coming from, I understood exactly where he was coming from, and I am delighted that he will keep this under review because I do think it's important for all councillors to be able to have their voice on all of these committees. And so that's where we are, Mr Mayor, and as I said, thank you councillor Brock for your words tonight and for our discussion on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skeets. Next indication has come from councillor Ricky Davine, so Ricky Davine.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd actually support councillor Skeets's thoughts on going straight to our full committee meetings and not the reduced ones that we introduced in March. I don't see there's any reason at the moment not to have committee meetings with a full complement, and certainly other councils up and down the country are doing exactly that and managing remotely, and indeed, if we can manage a meeting of 40 odd councillors here in one go without too many problems, I think we should be prepared to work with the full complement in committee meetings as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Davine. Councillor White, you've just said that you're happy for your group to support the recommendations. Did you want to speak or just let that be noted?
No, I was just passing that around, so to speed up business.
Okay, that's really helpful, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Ballsden, you've indicated you should speak on the item.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, just quickly, I'd like to reinforce what councillor Skeets has already said. Just looking at the other Berkshire authorities, it is evident that they have been holding a full slate of councillors at their committees for several months. I acknowledge that immediately after lockdown was imposed, it took all authorities time to think through the processes and set them up, but I and the rest of the group believe that we should follow the example of Blacknell, Forest, Slough, West Berkshire, Wokingham and the Royal Borough of Windsor and Maidenhead, and ensure that all of our councillors are able to attend every single meeting because they've managed it, whether it's on Teams, Zoom or Blue Jeans, and therefore Reading should too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. So nobody else is indicating, so in which case can I ask councillor Page, please, to sum up and then put the motion? Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, sum up, and I think councillor Brock then should put the motion.
Sum up, but can I just make a few comments, Mr Matt? Can I just pick up on that last point from councillor Ballsden and also councillor Skeets? Can I remind colleagues that we in Reading are the most democratic authority in Berkshire in that we have the most inclusive system of government, mainly one based on committees that involve all members and a far greater range of members than exists in the so-called democratic governance procedures of the authorities she's just mentioned, all of which operate a cabinet system, a cabinet system which is much more exclusive and excludes by definition over three-quarters of the council, and the so-called attendance that councillor Ballsden is referring to is not as full committee members, it's simply being able to listen in. And our arrangements, as is made clear in paragraph 4.2, will not only maintain representation from all parties, but we also have a substitute arrangement which allows all members of the committee to be potentially attending the committee, and those that aren't formally a member will always be allowed a facility to speak to the committee if they have any particular ward interest that happens at planning, and all the chairs of the committees with the minimal amount of notice will grant that facility. So I totally reject this nonsense that somehow we are excluding a wider range of members. Our existing governance structures are the most inclusive in Berkshire, and the slightly reduced committee representation that's embodied in this resolution will hopefully only be temporary for a few months, and councillor Brock has rightly said that we will keep this under review. So let's not have any of this exaggerated pompous nonsense that we've just had from councillor Ballsden and to a lesser extent from councillor Skeets, you know, focus on the real issue, and that's the need for us as an authority to work together to overcome the problems created by the Covid pandemic. And Mr Mayor, with those comments, I will close. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Page. So that really ends with councillor Brock, if you'd just like to sum up, councillor Brock, and then put the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Page typically very understated there in his comments. I have to say that I wouldn't wish to follow the example of the Royal Borough of Windsor and Maidenhead in anything, but councillor Page has very accurately described the difference between the executive arrangement system used elsewhere in Berkshire and our own committee-based system, which is much better at fostering debate and dialogue and I think ultimately finding constructive consensus even in some cases. Councillor Davine, I know, is missing half of his group this evening, so I'm surprised that he's so favourable to full-size committees, but I understand where the argument's coming from. But let's be clear in responding to councillor Skeets, really, there's only one thing that could be seen to be less democratic about the system proposed here, and that's that it over-represents the opposition and under-represents the Labour group. So perhaps in future I should be less magnanimous in the way we seek to take things forward. But I'm really very concerned to hear councillor Skeets say that some of her members are feeling a bit redundant. I mean, I think on the Labour benches, councillors have realised that they're more important than ever and have been out working to support their community. communities throughout the pandemic, doing incredible work representing people with all sorts of challenges. And I think it's really been, it's demonstrated everything which we get into politics for, to work hard for neighbourhoods across our town. And so I'm very concerned. And if members on the Conservative benches are feeling redundant, because they're not going to as many committees, I would remind them that, of course, they can attend any committee and ask questions. And they can attend any committee and speak on an item, as is always the case. So given that this is something that affects my group more negatively than any other group, I think we're behaving with far greater dignity about these things. But I think I'll return to just move the recommendations as printed, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Brock. So we'll now move to a vote.
Can I raise a point of order, Chair?
You can councillor Davine.
And that is that my colleague councillor Connolly is actually present. She's listening in as we speak now.
Okay, right, and I can see her in the chat. Okay, well, we stand corrected on that one. Thank you very much indeed. So I will attempt this the first stab. If we can't do it, we'll go to a full recorded vote. But as you saw earlier, it's a fairly sort of grinding process. So can I ask all those that agree on a four the motion, basically to unmute and say four?
Four.
Okay, okay, I think we've got that. Is there anybody that wishes to vote against? Councillor Skeets, would you like to speak on behalf of your group, if you want to vote against?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, our group will be voting against. Now, I don't know if you want to take each individual member for democratic purposes, or whether or not you want to take my word for it. But I think I speak on behalf of my group.
Okay, I think we'll do, and officers can correct me if we're wrong, given that we know the numbers in terms of four, which I think includes the Greens as well, and we know that the Conservative group against, I'm happy to recall that the motion is passed. Councillor Connolly also indicating. So I'm happy to recall that the motion is passed, unless officers disagree with that proposition.
No, that's fine, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is carried. In which case, we now move to our three motions of the evening. And the first one is going to be put by councillor Challenger. It's titled tackling employment inequality. Councillor Challenger.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and for getting my surname correct as well. Sadly, did not get
Better and better.
Which are being used. Mr Mayor, I represent one of the most diverse and vibrant wards in Reading, which is a great honour and privilege. I'm bringing this motion this evening to champion Labour's commitment to doing everything it can to tackle inequality in Cates Grove and across our great borough. The black, Asian, and minority ethnic population of the South East stands at around 10%, but only 3.3% of local government staff are BAME in the South East, with a tiny minority holding senior roles within local government. This motion commits us to improving our numbers of staff that identify as black, not just at entry-level roles, but across every level of Reading Borough Council, to ensure that we reflect the people we serve. We have to ask ourselves as an employee tough questions, because to fix structural inequality in the workforce, it takes tough answers. That is why we will publish an ethnicity pay gap report on an annual basis, in the same way we do for gender, and ensure that we work to close the gap in pay. Information collected by the Department for Education shows that only 20% of BAME apprentices are under 19 in the UK, in comparison to 62% of warrant apprentices. This is why we are committed to raising the number of black apprentices in Reading Borough Council over the coming years. As a Labour and council, Reading is proud to stand on its record of being an anti-racist organisation, one that champions and celebrates our diverse communities. We all know that we can't fix endemic issues ourselves, and just within the boundaries of this borough. It is a much bigger issue than that. That is why this motion shrines our ongoing commitment to help tackle the structural racism that is present in all aspects of life, by lobbying the government to implement numerous outstanding recommendations, from reports into the Windrush and the McPherson Report, to name a few. Following on from that, we want to lead the way in the best process for our recruitment and retention. That's why we will sign up to the Race at Work Charter alongside 14 other local authorities, and the Business and Community Charter, imploring our partners across the Thames Valley and Reading region to do the same. As a white man, people may be asking why I should be bringing this motion and not a black comrade. The answer is simple. As an ally, it's important that we show our commitment to this fight in as many ways as possible. You can't leave it to the people in negatively effects to tackle these issues on their own and shout from the sidelines. You take action in collaboration with people to make positive change. I understand my privilege in this world, how it is established to see people like me, and the vital importance is to change in a world like that. We have to acknowledge the disproportionate effect coronavirus has had on the black community, which will only entrench these issues mentioned. And as the world reconciles with systemic racism, the timing for a motion like this has never been more apt. It's crucial that we continue to celebrate the positive and vital contributions that people bring to Reading through the results in this motion, and we shall look to continue and improve on that and move this motion, Chair.
So thank you councillor Challenger. Do you have a second, though?
I do, my wonderful world colleague councillor James.
Very good.
Mr Mayor, I second and reserve my right.
Okay, we're happy with that. So we're off, and we've got four speakers on this one. So the first one up is councillor Barnett Ward. And just to remind you all again, we're now on sort of red and green lights. You will get, if you're talking at length, there'll be an intervention at four minutes, and then you'll be just asked to finish at five. Councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I am not Reading born and bred. I moved here in 2003. And the point when I was walking around the town centre with my husband, saying, could we move to Reading? Could this be home? The point where I went, yes, absolutely, is when I saw the Black History mural, because then I knew that we would be moving to somewhere that was diverse, and that celebrated and valued its diversity. And I took over my current portfolio in May, when I had responsibility for communities and equalities, very soon after the killing of George Floyd. And we had the rise of the Black Lives Matter movement. And that made me pause, and it made me think and say, I've always celebrated and valued the inclusivity, the diversity, the opportunity in Reading. But we need to do more, and we need to really scrutinise. And that's what I've been doing, and that's why I value this motion. And I thank councillor Challenger for bringing it, because I think it gives focus to some of the work that we've been doing. Within the Communities Department, we already worked with organisations like ACRE to support groups affected by complex multiple factors of disadvantage. We're now working up a social inclusion action plan, working with various communities, understanding better what they're facing, the challenges that they're facing. And we're doing that within our workforce as well. We're reviewing our equalities frameworks, we're reviewing charters, there's one recommended in this motion, there are other charters as well that we're considering. We're bringing forward quarterly progress reports to the highest level of officers within the council, because we need to make sure that our workforce reflects our town, and that we have the best of what Reading has to offer, working for the people of Reading. And we only do that by being inclusive. We've been reviewing all of our employment policies in partnership with our recognised trade unions. We're setting up a BMA group. All members, and as a reminder, members that you need to do this, have been asked to take part in unconscious bias training. We will not let someone sit on an appointment committee for a senior role if they have not completed that training. This is vitally important, and I hope that everyone in this meeting can support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Davine. Councillor Davine.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Sorry, my fingers are not working the way they should. Thank you. Clearly, tackling equality in the workplace is a key requirement in trying to spread the notion of equality of opportunity throughout our society, at least for those of us who agree with the basic premise that all men and women are born equal and deserve equal opportunities in life. Quite clearly, it's plain to see, and some of the stats are referenced in the motion before us this evening, that although as a society we believe in equal opportunities, we have a long way to go before this ideal is achieved in practice. And BAME people are underrepresented in many public bodies, and understandably are impatient for more representation, and not just at the top tables. They are overrepresented in unemployment statistics, and in lower-paid jobs, and we are losing large numbers of the current teenage generation to drugs, alcohol, and gang culture. It is too easy to slip into these latter problem areas, when you have no job and poor prospects. This motion proceeds the list steps our council can take to redress the current imbalances in representation, and we support all of them, and hope they will in a year or two's time, reduce the inequality that hurts our reputation, and leaves our many capable people in poorly paid jobs and wastes their talents. I think one minor issue is that we should be wary of treating BAME people as a single identity, when they represent actually a multitude of different ethnic and religious groups, and some of whom are doing better in life than others. And I also think that just looking at the history of this country, it took the best part of 100 years for people to accept as equals members of the Irish and Jewish communities, who have been over here since the middle of the 1800s. And it's worth pointing out that tackling people's prejudices is not a simple matter, or one that a simple, single discussion can solve. I am pleased that the subject of inequality in the workplace is being addressed positively. And I'm sure all of us here support the actions in this motion, and are happy to play our part in tackling employment inequality. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davine. Councillor Raj Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank councillor Challenger for moving this motion, and this is the need of the hour, and imperative to make sure there is equality of opportunity. Although the Equality Act of 2010 been in place for over a decade, the motion talks about achieving the excellent rating in future local government equality framework peer challenges. Under the Equality Act of 2010, the council needs to meet this obligation of embedding diversity, equality, and inclusion in all that we do. It is an essential ingredient for success and fundamental to influencing work within all organisations. All, and I need not remind the Reading Borough Council, that it is not, it is the responsibility of the senior executive and management to reassure all that positive action will be based on merit for all underrepresented groups, according to the Equality Act of 2010, section 149, 158, and 159. So instead of bringing in the motion, the prudent thing would have been to bring in a self-assessment report on the equality framework, and show what steps the council has taken to remove this impediment from the system at the local level, and identify the current challenges. The motion also states that work is already being undertaken at the council to identify the gaps and long-term solutions to fix the inequality in our community and workforce. There is a diversity, equality, inclusion, coordination committee, which should be developing and delivering this on behalf of Reading Borough Council, as per the section 149 Equality Act of 2010. And this needs to be time-bound, Mr Mayor, and reported back to the council. Otherwise, we will be in the vicious cycle of applying bandits with moving the motions, signing up the charters, or conducting surveys on this abhorrent issue, such as racism and inequality, and causing frustration with the lack of real action. This council needs to reassure that all positive action will be based on merit for all underrepresented groups, and that there is a commitment to help recruit, develop, and retain, with results of any progress being readily published. With those comments, Mr Mayor, our group will be supporting this motion, and we're looking forward to work on this.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Councillor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Green councillors are happy to support this motion. It's the first step, and hopefully one of many. And it's particularly gratifying to see it emerge from the council's own staff and senior managers, rather than some empty political gesture. Black Lives Matter, and it's a shame this council has left its promises of 2000 and 2010 drift, but we welcome any action that puts back things back in the right direction. This council should also lead by example, and by reflecting the community it serves. It should redress the bias of generations and ensure that the Caribbean and diaspora community has its home in the heart of Reading. It should ensure that community matters when it takes decisions, and that employment opportunities are fair and equal for all. All dialogue is required, and preferably with more black voices in the conversation. This motion is a first step, and we support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor James, to second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for your support. Councillor McGonigal, I appreciate your support, although I would say that the Labour Party in Reading has done a fantastic job of engaging black colleagues as councillors, and will continue to do so in future. I'd like to thank councillor Davine for your support, although I must stand to correct you on a couple of things. Drugs, alcohol, and gang culture are not an issue specific to the black community, they intersect with social class and social inequality, and I want to make that clear. I would also like to state that black people have been in the UK for a very, very, very long time. There were black soldiers, Roman soldiers garrisoned here in the third century AD. Councillor Raj Singh, self-assessments, reports, commissions, they only go so far. There is a list of reports linked to this motion and listed on this motion. We want to make it clear to our community where we stand. And I don't believe the party that oversaw the Windrush scandal can be lecturing anybody on the urgency of action against racism. Thank you councillor Barnett Ward for your support, and thank you to councillor Challenger for demonstrating what it means to be a true ally. This motion, as said, highlights the stark inequalities in the local government workforce. Indeed, as many have mentioned tonight, these are inequalities which exist across leadership positions in our society. You could look at education, you can look at the justice system, you can look at Grenfell, and you can look at the Windrush scandal, because we have seen firsthand the hugely damaging impact that racial injustice has when state bodies do not reflect the communities that they represent. It doesn't feel right to let this Black History Month pass against the backdrop of Black Lives Matters, without responding to some concerns in our local community. The Labour Party in Reading has a very proud record of anti-racist campaigning. We have supported the anti-apartheid movement. We have demonstrated against local fascist groups, and we have stood shoulder to socially distant shoulder at the Black Lives Matters campaign earlier this year. I mean, this motion notes that fewer than 4% of chief executives in unitary authorities are people of colour. There are 56 unitaries in the UK. Let me just let that sink in for a moment there. It demonstrates the clear gap between the population of the South East and its local government workforce. This motion also demonstrates the need to go further, and to work in partnership with state bodies to ensure that we are all unified in action against racism and racial injustice in the workplace. This motion finally commits to Reading as an anti-racist authority. And yes, some of the work in this area has begun. But this is quite a frank recognition that our council cannot be the best that it could be, without further diversification of the workforce. We know that always starts from the top down. We want to develop an apprenticeship programme so that people of colour, and especially young black people, who are so very often discriminated in the job market, have a fair opportunity to work, and are encouraged to work, because we know that BAME job applicants must send approximately 80% more applications to receive a positive response from an employer. We want to publish our ethnicity pay gap reporting on an annual basis to make sure that we are holding ourselves to account on truly diversifying the workforce, and to demonstrate our commitment to ensuring that people of colour are encouraged into our workforce at every single level. And we want to top that off by signing the Race at Work Charter, which calls for action on BAME career progression, because it is not just about getting into a role, it's about having a fair opportunity to progress through an organisation. So councillors, thank you for your support thus far, and I would wholeheartedly ask you to support this motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Challenger, could I ask you to briefly, if you would, sum up, and then put the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a pleasure to sum up this motion and to hear that cross-party support. And I think it's just important to make clear that this isn't a first step, this is a step, this is part of a package that councillor Barnett Ward has talked about in more detail, and more detail across the whole regions of work that we're doing to engage not just the black community across Reading, but all of our diverse communities across town, regardless of their ethnicity as well. So I think it has to be committed to the council.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much indeed. I think I'm right in saying that spokesmen for all groups have indicated their support for the motion. So if you'd like to unblock your microphones now and indicate support, please do so now. please do so now.
Agreed.
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 Yeah, okay, don't overdo it. Quite nice. Thank you very much. Okay, good. All right, so that's item nine. Item 10, Homes at Heart. Our own councillor John Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think I've got five minutes, haven't I? Unlike councillor, unlike Alex Sharma MP, I'm not going to look at the football tonight, I'm going to concentrate on the politics and an important issue of housing. Thanks to this, putting this motion forward, particularly to councillor Emberson, she's done a lot of work on supporting Homes at the Heart campaign, and this motion is to support the National Housing Federation's Homes at the Heart. To quote, "We have a national housing crisis, the system is broken." That's not my words, that's the words of the Prime Minister Boris Johnson when he spoke about housing and a way forward. And what we've seen is a decade of austerity and lost opportunity for millions upon millions of people, particularly young people, who are stuck in a cycle of high rents and with no chance of accommodation that they can call their own, no chance of a mortgage, no chance of a decent standard of accommodation and no chance of affordable rent. And this campaign, everyone deserves a safe, secure, comfortable place to call home that is generally affordable. And we as politicians, local politicians and national politicians, have a duty to invest in decent housing that everybody can afford, and we believe at Reading that we have a duty to invest in social housing, council housing. The government has promised in its level and up agenda, and it's part of the motion, if you look at it, to build affordable homes and put money aside. We need to keep them to their promises. But however, the problems have been despite numerous and national, numerous local and national obstacles over a period, a long time over a decade, it's difficult to build social, generally social housing, general council housing. Reading have delivered, Reading have led the way and delivered on hundreds of social housing, hundreds of council housing for elderly and for families and for young people and single people. We've done that and have been able to transform numerous lives of local Reading residents, and there's more on the horizon. Despite opposition, we're committed to building council housing as much as possible. We locally have invested millions of tenants' rents and want to thank the tenants for their support in that, in building new homes. And Reading is leading the way in delivering energy efficient homes through the retrofitting of its current council stock. We are leading the way in the passive house principles in building new council housing. It's so important, it's a priority to deliver homes for people, but as zero carbon neutral as possible and energy efficient. We've kept our own council housing stock while others have sold them off. We did that because we value our council tenants and we value council housing. We're building new homes to passive house principles. We're building new homes that are going to be energy efficient for the new tenants transforming their lives. We're calling on the government, and this campaign is calling on the government, to drop obstacles in council building, in councils being able to build homes, to drop the white paper on housing, which will mark the end of affordable housing. I won't spend too much time because I think I'm going to run out on the white paper, which we discussed and got cross-party support at the policy committee, and I want to thank the political parties across this council for supporting that and moving that forward. It felt was good work. So we resolve to support the Homes at Heart campaign right to the Chancellor making that, to lobby in partnership across parties and with other agencies against the implementation of the planning white paper, to continue to invest in decarbonisation of social housing stock. Colleagues, it is our duty to provide decent, generally affordable homes, and that are energy efficient, cutting carbons, and Reading are committed to doing that. Thank you for supporting this motion in advance.
Thank you councillor Ennis. councillor Page.
I second and reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. councillor White. councillor White.
Hello, Mr Mayor.
You indicated you wish to speak on this item.
Yes, thank you, sorry it took me a second to get my camera on. Green councillors will be supporting this motion. There are 3,417 households on the Reading council housing waiting list. Last year, 1,000.
Plastic one of those.
Hold on a minute, can we just pause? councillor Singh, I think you are having an interesting conversation. You beautied yourself. Thank you much. Right, councillor White, please continue.
Wonderful, thank you. Let me find my place. Last year, 1,066 households approached the council at risk of homelessness. The number of our residents sleeping rough on our streets was on the increase until the pandemic hit. We support the call for investment in social housing to tackle Reading's housing crisis. In Reading, council officers acknowledge that the scale of the climate emergency is great and that we need to be insulating 4,000 homes per year. The council has done a good job of insulating council homes, however, more should be done to insulate homes in the private sector supported by the council. In recent years, the council has insulated hardly any homes in the private sector. Fuel poverty is when you don't have enough money to heat your home. 7,290 people in Reading are living in fuel poverty. No one should be in a cold, damp home this winter, and action insulating homes in the private rented sector would help tackle fuel poverty in the town. Mr Mayor, we need social housing to tackle Reading's housing crisis. We need well-insulated, warm homes to reduce fuel bills and to cut carbon emissions. There should be no families on the housing waiting list, and no one should have to choose between heating and eating. Green councillors will be supporting this motion. We need more action from the government, and we need more action from the council as well.
Thank you councillor White. councillor Grasshoff.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, we welcome the government's.
Do you want to show your face?
I'm trying, I have turned my camera on, but I'm not sure I've got.
Okay, you need the lights on as well. Okay, carry on.
The lights are on. I don't know why it's not working. Anyway, I'll turn my camera off, I think, because it's not working. We welcome the government's pledge to invest £12.2 million in more affordable housing. We need more affordable housing. But in a town where often even the housing which has been made more affordable is still too expensive for many hardworking families, we also need more social housing. Many of us in this meeting, people on all sides of the chamber, myself included, have families who have or have themselves benefited from social housing. For some, it's a leg up and an opportunity to get some breathing space and save some money before they move on to buying houses of their own, and for others, it will be an ongoing lifeline that they need for much longer. Homes at the Heart is a campaign highlighting how the government should be putting, building social housing at the heart of our economic and social recovery. And, you know, we understand that building and maintaining social housing provides jobs, it contributes a lot of money to the economy, and also good quality housing promotes good and physical and mental health. We also recognise Reading's commitment to tackling climate change and support the aim to provide energy efficient housing to all tenants. The government is making £50 million available to social housing landlords to bid for via a competition process to help tackle the decarbonisation of housing stock. This will sit alongside the £2 billion Green Homes Grant for private homeowners and the £1 billion pledge for public buildings. We're obviously aware and accept that this falls a long way short of the 9.2 billion promised in the manifesto. You know, we are in unprecedented times of financial uncertainty, we would like to see the money being made available, of course we would. You know, governments are having to put significant spending into implementing COVID-19 measures and recovery strategies, and we are very much hoping that we will find out more and the Chancellor will give us more clarity in the Autumn Spending Review about what's going to happen with the promise from the manifesto. The Conservative Group have already given their support to the authority regarding the planning white paper, so I'm not going to comment further on that. But in summary, Mr Mayor, while we in the Conservative Group are happy to support the resolutions laid out in this motion, because we recognise that they will support those in Reading who most need help, while also hopefully moving forward with the authority's stated aims to reduce carbon emissions, we also recognise that the government will be working with a smaller economy in the medium term and with additional pressures on public spending. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Grasshoff. Various useful suggestions in the sidebar from colleagues as to how we might see you next time. councillor Devine.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We will of course be supporting this motion, and we will always be happy to support investments in truly affordable housing. And we should all welcome the £12 billion investment being made by the government. However, the government's idea of affordability grates against almost everything we know about social housing. Using a lot of this funding to support first-time buyers will not solve the crisis in housing that we see ruining the lives of many who cannot afford even a subsidised mortgage. Diverting money to first-time buyers will only help the middle classes and leave less in the pot for those who really need help to find a home, and I suspect there are not too many would-be first-time buyers amongst the council's 3,600, I think it is now, of families who are on the housing waiting list. Secondly, it is about time that this government and others who govern before them recognise that local councils need both finance and new powers to tackle the lack of affordable housing. We need the power to insist on a percentage of new housing being given over to social and preferably affordable housing, either through housing associations or through local councils themselves. Thirdly, it is becoming apparent that local councils are more than capable of making sure that new builds of whatever market conform to the latest low-carbon standards, and also that given the finance, they can also convert existing houses to modern carbon efficient standards, and with a little effort, the whole social housing sector could commit to tackling the carbon deficit associated with most houses by adhering to passive house standards and other carbon efficient standards in all new builds. And lastly, I'm not going to repeat the arguments against the government's white paper on planning, which has indeed attracted widespread opposition from across the political spectrum, but I think the Homes at Heart campaign is heading in the right direction, and we will be supporting it.
Thank you councillor Devine. So councillor Page, would you like to make your second of speech?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. I'll be brief. I welcome, obviously, as we all do, the general support locally, but I think we all have to recognise that one of the big problems that we have is as a local authority, our hands are tied substantially by national government, and until there is genuine devolution and freedom at local level for authorities such as Reading to address their housing needs in a way that actually recognises the local demand, then we are going to be whistling in the wind. Since I've been on this council, we've lost over half our council housing stock, and in spite of demands from the council, successive governments have not allowed us to replace one-for-one houses and flats that have been sold. And we had the most recent assurance from Eric Pickles only a few years ago that we would be allowed to replace one-for-one, and the financing and the rules would allow that. That has never happened. And in the meantime, our housing stock, our council housing stock continues to diminish. We should have the right, as was offered to us in the most recent Labour Party manifesto, to be able to suspend council house sales in Reading until we have a much more balanced housing market. That used to be the case nationally for many, many years, until Mrs Thatcher withdrew that discretion. We should be able to respond locally in a way that builds our stock and reinstates that so that people in genuine need, as councillor Ennis and other speakers have referred to, people who can't afford to buy houses but need to be able to rent at affordable levels. And until we have sufficient stock to address those needs, we will continue to see the ridiculously long lists in Reading. And the other thing that of course we need to recognise is that simply looking at the overall numbers of completions of new houses and flats in Reading disguises the fact that it's the wrong mix, and our strategic housing market assessment in Reading reminded us and said that ideally we should be having 60% affordable housing amongst all new stock. If we get 20%, we'll be lucky as a result of current rules. And we have house builders stockpiling and not building out planning consents around us in Berkshire and in Oxfordshire, and they might be able to help the needs of this borough as well. So Chair, Mr Mayor, I would hope, and I did, I suspect that we will be getting unanimous support, but I would say particularly to Conservative members that they do need to press on their ministers the need for us to have a much greater range of powers, access to more finance, so that we can deliver the mix of affordable and social housing that will finally address the needs of this borough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Page. councillor Ennis, would you like to sum up briefly, please, and then put the motion?
I will, I will. I will try not to be too tribal. I want to thank the cross-party support of this motion going forward, and we need to make sure we put it into action. Just a point to councillor White from the Greens is that, you know, we want more action from the council. Just want to remind you that you opposed on a number of occasions your party the building of passive house principal council housing, you've opposed it. So, you know, we want action and we want support as well, and I suspect you will in the future be opposing it, so you want to think about that. Also on the private sector, as you've been briefed, that the borough is actually getting grants from government and utilising grants and getting match funding money as well. That's the plan to actually support fuel poverty in the private sector, so we're actually working on that as well. I want to thank everybody, all the councillors for supporting and moving forward, and I think it's best that we work together as a council to ensure that we can build more social housing, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you councillor Ennis. So once again, it's quite helpful that various spokesmen have indicated their group's support. So with that, I will ask you all to unblock your microphones, please unmute yourselves and indicate your support for the motion.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Agreed.
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 Maybe we should go back to everybody individually speaking. Okay, great stuff. Thank you very much for that. So finally, we then move to the last item of the agenda, which is the third motion, item 11, hydrotherapy, hydrotherapy services. councillor Hoskins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity. Councillors, for a few years, remember the motion we brought in 2017, which was very similar to this one, when the hydrotherapy services were previously threatened, and this council unanimously expressed its desire that those hydrotherapy services should continue. Councillors also, remember the very significant community campaign, particularly amongst the groups that use those services. And it is disappointing, I think, and unfortunate that this consultation that the NHS, CCG, the commissioning group are conducting over the future of hydrotherapy services in Reading is taking place at the moment in the midst of a pandemic, because actually I think if that wasn't the case, we would be seeing a very high-profile campaign, because, you know, this is a greatly valued service. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things, well, I'm not going to try and repeat hardly any of the things that are in this motion, I'm trying to outline the argument within the motion itself, but I think it is really important to, for all councillors and for members of the public to understand, you know, the real value of hydrotherapy services, and the value in particular that they provide around people's wellbeing, quality of life, and I strongly believe the providing support for people to stay often with lots of. often with lots of maybe multiple illnesses or ongoing and underlying conditions, to be well, to provide to their quality of life and to stay independent. And indeed, through that, if we look at it in cold money terms, by staying healthier to need less support from the NHS. So I think on those grounds in particular, I think it's important that we make clear our objection or rather, I say, make clear through the consultation our support for the ongoing provision of hydrotherapy services within Reading. One of the arguments for bringing forward this consultation is that the service is not what we would call COVID friendly. Obviously, you can imagine a hydrotherapy pool is not something that can be run particularly easily in the midst of pandemic. My contention and the contention within this motion is that it's far too early to be making decisions around services we expect to be hoped to see for a number of years to come on the basis of the pandemic at the moment. And we believe that it's premature to end that service on that basis. Councillors will, I think, should know, we are knocking on an open door in terms of the request that we do a formal response from council officers. Speaking to council officers in our care services, they also believe that the service provided to our clients, the people that use our services, is extremely valuable and believe that as a council we should be making the case in the consultation that they should continue. The, I stated, I don't need to say very much more. And there's a very, very strong community campaign for the continuation of these services. I think it's also, I think, it's also worth saying, I mean, there is the issue of the NHS's financial state. Councillors may be a little bit surprised, and I think people in the community may be a little bit surprised of the severe position that the NHS finances are under. I'll be summarising up. Before the onset of the pandemic, our local NHS, Berkshire West NHS area, was facing a funding gap of £20.7 million. That will only be worked under the present situation with the effects of the pandemic and the associated health impacts. So we do understand the pressure that the NHS will be under in order to make savings around costs. But I strongly believe that this is the wrong saving to make and I strongly believe that this is a service that is extremely important to the people of Reading and should continue for many years to come. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Councillor Jones, I think you'd like to second reserve your right.
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. So councillor Robinson. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Fellow councillors, firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Hoskins for bringing this motion to council this evening. As he's already mentioned, there is a strong sense of déjà vu over this motion in that I recall, as he does, that we were debating the same proposal to close the hydrotherapy pool at the Royal Berkshire Hospital just a few years back. Thankfully, on that occasion, the right decision was made and the hospital retained this highly valuable treatment facility. I think you can guess by what I've said already that it will come as no surprise that we will be supporting this motion this evening. Hydrotherapy is a very valuable resource in the provision of patient care and treatment. It helps reduce pain by promoting normal movement, increasing muscle length and increasing muscle strength and control. It's a key element of the physiotherapy services and treatments offered at the Royal Berkshire Hospital and brings so many benefits to its patients, such as relieving pain for those suffering from a wide variety of conditions such as rheumatoid arthritis, osteoarthritis, fibromyalgia, ankylosing spondylitis, as well as other musculoskeletal or neurological conditions. In paediatric care, it regularly helps children with orthopedic or neurological conditions, spinal bifida, ret syndrome and cerebral palsy, to name but a few. It also helps speed the recovery and patients' rehabilitation following surgery on back, abdominal or lower limbs that causes them difficulty mobilising or those unable to wake back fully. Hydrotherapy greatly helps by increasing joint movement and increasing muscle strength. It's even used to assist patients with cardiovascular or pulmonary conditions by enhancing muscular and cardiopulmonary endurance in both the elderly and those suffering with chronic heart failure. The list of ways in which hydrotherapy can assist and bring health and wellbeing patient benefits to patients is so long. And this facility, we believe, should be protected for the good of our patients' care in Reading and in Berkshire. Whilst it may be temporarily closed during the current pandemic, this is no excuse to make that closure permanent. Fellow councillors, I urge you to vote in support of this motion and send a strong message to Berkshire West CCG of overwhelming support for this well loved and much valued facility to remain at our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robinson. So next up is councillor Wittem. Councillor Wittem.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay, I was having trouble muting. But thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Hoskin for this motion. The hydrotherapy pool is an important resource that, as we've heard, has come under threat a number of times over the years. Various services across the NHS have been reduced or stopped during the pandemic, but this should not be used as an excuse for the CCG to shut them down permanently. So the Green group will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wittem, very good. Councillor Davine.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I must admit, I was not surprised to hear that Berkshire West CCG wants to drop its hydrotherapy service and is now consulting on the future of that service, presumably with an eye to closing it. I should make it clear that I'm secretary of the Reading branch of Parkinson's UK, which is one of the charities mentioned in the motion, that have made very good use of the hydrotherapy pool in the Royal Barks for a number of years. And there is no doubt that running hydrotherapy services is a costly business. And most pools can only cater for half a dozen patients at any one time and they need a trained physiotherapist and one or two assistants present in each session. And so if you're trying to run a couple of sessions a week, you're talking about something like £10,000 a year. So it's a considerable investment for charities such as Parkinson's UK to make. And nursing staff alike recognise the great potential benefits that hydrotherapy can give to people. And we've heard a lot of that in previous speakers. At Parkinson's UK, we have looked for small alternatives in and around Reading. And currently, there is not very much on offer that can meet the requirements for numbers and timings of the sessions. And because what we found is that with more folks wanting to use a smaller number of pools, booking times for sessions has become much more difficult. And so I absolutely support this motion to keep a hydrotherapy service at RBH running. And I thank councillor Hoskins for bringing the motion forward. And we will, of course, be supporting it.
Thanks very much councillor Davine. So councillor Hacker, you want to say something?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I'm speaking as somebody who has two of the conditions that are listed. So I have fibromyalgia and arthritis. And I just want to give the reason why the hydrotherapy pool shouldn't be closed, a human spin. Let's first of all talk about the timing of this potential closure and consultation. So we are at the height of a pandemic. Many people with disabilities may have additional conditions which mean they've been shielding. Other people have been trying, you know, quite rightly to avoid going out too much and congregating. So there just isn't the opportunity at the moment to raise awareness of this consultation and also campaign the way we did back in January 2017, like I did at the Broad Street Mall. We also have to think about the fact that, yes, it hasn't been used for a while, but it will be needed and greatly needed in the next few years, once people come out of lockdown. When you're in lockdown, you're maybe confined to your house. You can't exercise the way you're used to. And for many people with conditions like arthritis and fibromyalgia, we find that it's important to get out and exercise and move our bodies in order to reduce the amount of pain that we're in. So there's two factors as to why the timing of this consultation and potential close down is entirely incorrect. But also, let's talk about the breadth of people that use this, as young people, as old people. I was first introduced to hydrotherapy pool when I was pregnant with my youngest boy. So roughly about 10, 11 years ago, because I had pelvic girdle pain. It's something that I may be offering in the future if it's still there, if my arthritis in my knees gets worse or I find my fibromyalgia has moved around my body and I need that support to stay mobile. But what we need to also consider is the future of people with disabilities over the last few months who found themselves confined and really don't want to stay that way. They want to be able to move freely. They want to be free of pain. And they want to, when it's safe, to rejoin their communities. So I'm really glad to see this motion come to council today and to hear the cross party support. Because it really is a very poor idea to close something that can give so many people relief from the everyday pains and constrictions of various conditions mentioned in the motion. But I do have to make a quick point. It's all very well for councillor Robinson to say that they support the motion and it's welcome. But the reason why we're having to look at potentially closing the hydrotherapy pool and other cuts within the Royal Berkshire Hospital services is simply because our NHS is not being given the funding it needs to provide the services that we, the people, the public, need to maintain safe, healthy and comfortable lives. So I'm really pleased to hear we have cross party support, but this is by no means the end. We can campaign online and once it's safe to do so, I will be out campaigning, maybe in the Broad Street Mall, once again, to make sure that people like me across Reading and across Berkshire have access to this vital resource. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hacker. So then councillor Jones, you'd like to make your second of speech?
Mr Mayor, given the earlier contributions, I'll keep my comments brief. Mr Mayor, I'm sure this is a genuine consultation. I'm also sure that the CCG would be horrified if anyone would think them guilty of short sighted, opportunistic, sharp practice under the cover of COVID-19. If heard from others, there's overwhelming support for the continuation of this pool service. And I'm sure the CCG will conclude that soon to themselves. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jones. So councillor Hoskins, would you like then to sum up briefly again, please, and then put the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for councillors for supporting this. Unanimous as the last time this came round and I'm really pleased to see that. And thank you for councillor Hackers giving us all a human face to how important this service is. I should say, we will, obviously, the resolution is to respond in the way that's mentioned there. The chief exec of the, the chief officer of the CCG has said that following on from the consultation, they are going to come to, they want to come to our Adults, Children's and Education Committee to present those as part of the scrutiny. So we will get another opportunity as a council on that committee to further input into that consultation. I think, you know, the unanimity of this council and of this resolution, I think, provides those committee members with the mandate to say very strongly where we feel. And I'll end just by saying, I may be a little bit distracted when I opened this because my dog wandered into this room and I was expecting to bark at any moment. But it does actually raise to me that the really important point is that, as a dog owner, I know that there's a number of hydrotherapy services available to animals and pets in this area. And it would really be an outrage and a disgrace if the pet population of Reading and Berkshire had access to far better hydrotherapy services than people. So hopefully, we will be successful again in protecting this service. And I thank you all again for your support.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Hoskin. So with that, I think if I ask councillors to unmute, if councillor's and councillor Hoskin's dog would indicate their support for the motion, I'll be grateful. Okay. Thank you, got it. Okay, so that's it. So that was the last item of business. Councillors, thank you very much for being so helpful this evening. That seems to work better last bit we hoped for, which is good. So thank you very much for that. Thank you much for officers for your support. Thank you for the one member of the public for her question. And for those that have watched, I hope you've found it informative and enjoyable to see. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, well done.
Thank you David, well shared.
Bye David, goodnight.
You're welcome.
Lovely job, thank you.
Great job.
Good job, Mr Mayor.